Mrs. Clark will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Clark. If I may have a moment of silence for Frida K. Medansy, Mr. Medansy's mother, who passed away on July 30th, and a moment of silence in her honor.
Thank you. Before we begin our discussion this evening, I would like to make a public statement. I certainly understand that many have different opinions on the opening of our schools, and they are all entitled to that. I took the opportunity to visit Southington High School to see for myself what was being done to prepare for school opening. I was so impressed with all the precautions that have been put in place. No one can guarantee 100% safety, but our administrators, our maintenance, our school nurses, our central office staff, our lunch people, our secretaries, they have put in so many hours into planning to make certain our students and staff have a safe, healthy environment. I also want to thank the teachers and students and have them work on developing, or redeveloping, I should say, relationships that were so abruptly stopped in March. We have to concentrate on the emotional well-being of all. That is going to be very important. We have to stress that we are all in this together. We will make mistakes, and then we'll correct them, and we'll start again. Be patient, give it your best, as I know you always have. A very smart man said, "Learn from yesterday, live for today, and hope for tomorrow." That's Albert Einstein. Thank you.
Any other board members? Mr. O'Shannon?
So, yeah, I actually did the same thing. I went to JFK Middle School and O'Shannon Elementary School this past week when announced to see what things looked like, just because I wanted to see before the kids went back to school. At Kennedy, building looked great. I mean, they obviously had done a lot of work there. It was clean, it was very well laid out. The rooms were all set up. And the teachers were, it was a PD day, so I tried not to bother people, but Rick came along with me. I didn't want to bother anybody. But they were all doing their PD, they were all at their desks, some were collaborating together. It was really kind of neat. And when they were in their rooms alone, at their desk, at their computer, doing their work, if I walked in, they would reach for their mask and put it on. If there were a couple of them together in the room, they all had them on. So it's a, again, if they were alone, they didn't have to wear it, but as soon as somebody came in, they put it on. At O'Shannon, the same thing happened. The teachers were working, prepping their rooms, working on materials, getting it ready for the students to come in, and they were also doing the PD work. Desk spacing was pretty impressive. They were also, they put markings on the floor, which makes it a lot easier that when you get up and you push your desk back, they know where to put it once it's time to put them back into place. To me, it looks like at both schools, the message, "Safety first," was heard loud and clear. There's been a lot of talk, I mean, about this school reopening process, some positive and a lot negative. And I think a lot of that is because this is something we've never seen before, and we just don't know what to do yet, in some cases. But like the chair, I want to recognize the teachers, the administrators, the nurses, the custodians. The custodians, my God, the job they did. And administration throughout the district for the hard work that they did. They did this all summer long. They didn't have a summer. They took this summer to put their lessons in place so they could teach our students. That is something that they would do normally, but in this particular scenario, when their life is turned upside down as well, they focused on creating the best educational experience for our students that they could do. From an educational perspective, like I said, forced the teachers and staff to reinvent the way they're going to interact and educate the students, and we should all be thankful. And as the chair said, I think there's going to be bumps in the road along the way. We're going to learn as things go on, and we'll make things even better. But people need to come into it with an open mind, not just throwing stones, not just saying everything's bad. Come in with an open mind. If you see something that can be done better, raise it, raise the issue. Bring it up and maybe just don't just bring up the problem, but if you have some suggestions on a solution, a good, solid solution, bring it up. So if we keep this in mind and work together, I think it's going to be a great school year. But I just think that what I saw so far is very impressive.
Mrs. Clark?
I'm going to remove my mask because I'm going to have to, I'm reading a letter, and I don't want it to be muffled because it's not my writing. But before I do that, I just want to mention, I went and saw Southend School today, and I went to Hatton as well, just to look, just to see. Because you hear, and you hear stories, you hear complaints, you see things on social media that are nothing short of disturbing, but you still read them anyway. It's like watching an accident. But in any event, I went to the school. I saw nothing but enthusiasm. I saw smiles before I entered a classroom, and people put their masks back on, but I did see them smile. I saw people that were anxious. I won't say they weren't anxious. They are going to be anxious because they want to make this year as normal as they possibly can. And they are doing everything in their power, from the custodians, the kitchen staff who I talked to. Everyone is pulling together. I heard not one complaint from anyone, which, in my mind, is remarkable considering I walked through the school, and I can't tell you how many people I talked to. It was, I was very encouraged, I was very elated to see how well everyone was adapting to what is the new normal. And as Mrs. Carmody and Mr. O'Shannon said, we're going to, there's going to be bumps in the road, and everyone is aware of that. No one has the complete and absolute answers to every question that is out there right now. But at the end of the day, everybody is working together for our kids, and that's what's important. So it was, I was very gratified to go to see what was being done. Now I'd like to read a letter that we were asked to read into the record from a resident, Mrs. Jillian Eckard. So I'm going to read it. "Good evening, Mr. Cannell and Mr. Medansy and Board of Education members. My name is Jillian Eckard. I have been a resident of Southington since 2004. I have two children in the Urban T. Kelly School District. My daughter Audra will be entering second grade, and my son Andrew will be starting his educational journey in kindergarten. I am writing to you today to stress the importance of in-school learning for our youngest learners. I am very much, I very much appreciate all the effort that was put forth by the reopening committee, and not wavering from starting the school year with a full in-person learning for those who choose to send their children. I thank you for listening to our government, our epidemiologists, and our pediatricians, who all believe that in-person learning is essential for our children's well-being, both academically and mentally, especially at the younger levels. I hope that as the school year starts, we continue to look at the science and metrics as leading indicators when and if we decide to potentially switch from in-person to hybrid or full-distance models. I hope that we do not make decisions out of fear on what is happening in other countries, states, or even other counties. If the switch is not scientifically warranted, I would implore you to think of the mental impact switching educational plans that it would have on our children before making that decision. Our county currently has a seven-day rolling average of new COVID-19 cases per 100,000 per day of 1.5 cases. We have been plateaued at or around this level for almost two months now. All of our secondary indicators are also extremely low, and again, have plateaued at a low indicator risk category for well over a month. Medical experts have advised our government that the switch to hybrid learning should not happen unless the new COVID-19 cases per 100,000 per day exceeds 10. I implore you to follow these guidelines. I would also hope that we take the theory behind the cohorting to heart, and that an isolated case in one school or even one classroom will not impact the school learning of others. We actively participated in distance learning this past spring. To say it was hard on my daughter would be an understatement. She was not given any direct instruction. Instead, I was given a curriculum that I was not equipped to adequately disseminate. This caused her to doubt herself academically, which had a severe impact on her mental health. Despite efforts of her school psychologist and teacher, it was not uncommon several days a week for her to have meltdowns lasting hours. In speaking with many other parents, I am, I know I am not alone in this. I have been told that distance learning will be more synchronous this year, but I wonder how effective it will be for young children. I'd like you to think how long a child of that age not only can, but should be sitting in front of a computer screen. And how effective would that learning be? Would it instead be detrimental to their lifelong love of learning, causing irreversible damage to developing psyches? My husband and I both work full-time and are unable to work from home. I am considered an essential employee as a forensic scientist at the state's Division of Scientific Services. I am also considered, per my commissioner, a first responder, and therefore am exempt from the Family First Coronavirus Response Act. Myself, like many others who are unable to work from home or are unable to take a leave at reduced pay, would be forced in a hybrid plan, or full distance for that matter, to scrounge for whatever limited daycare is available, doubling my child's, children's exposure, and subsequently the rest of their cohorts, to other children and adults. Southington is a large town, but it has a small-town feel. And with that, rumors spread. Everyone seems to know someone, in quotes, who has heard something, again, in quotes, from someone on the Board of Education, the reopening committee, and the higher-ups in administration, up until including the superintendents. The ones that have reached me recently through friends and family include that, and I quote, "We probably won't even get, be even be in school for three weeks," and, again, in quotes, "will be lucky if we last a month before everything gets shut down." It is so disheartening to hear these words coming from people given such great responsibility, which seems to be based in fear rather than based on actual numbers. At our Kelly School PTO meeting this week, the PTO approved $6,000 to be spent on three outdoor tents, so the children can be in class outside. $500 to be spent on three, to be spent on lanyards for the children's mass, and almost $1,000 for individual cohort recess supplies. With all this time, effort, and money going into bringing the students back to school, deciding to close schools again should not be a decision made lightly or based on fear. As each sector of our economy has opened up in several phases in Connecticut, there was a sense of fear and uncertainty as we moved forward. Yet with each step, our numbers have continued to decline to some of the best in the nation. I understand the nervousness of teachers and administration. As everyone was sheltering in their houses in the spring, I was going to work every day, not knowing what I was being exposed to or what I would bring home to my family. Then slowly, as almost all types of businesses have opened, appropriate safety protocols have been put into place that have allowed for our society and economy to return to a place where it is functioning. Now with the school year upon us, it is, it is the turn of the educators to put those safety precautions into place and resume their own essential and immensely important role in our society. Thank you very much for your time. Signed, Jillian Eckard.
Thank you, Mrs. Clark. Any other board members before we begin? Mr. Cannell or Mrs. D'Nello? I'm not certain.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Carmody. We are going to turn it over to Mrs. D'Nello because it is a financial update. Mrs. D'Nello, please.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. We made the decision not to send this document out to you in advance because there really is a lot that we wanted to be able to explain and go through, and things were really changing throughout the day up until the last 10 minutes, when I got a quick email from the CFO from the State Department of Education. So I thought we'd start with the revenue side, which is the first page you have here. And I'd like to walk you through some items on this. So we all know that we had been approved for the ESER CARES funds of the $412,000, which the district utilized to purchase our one-to-one device plan. After that, we have the funding for the 2021 year. As you know, the Board of Finance has established our non-lapsing account for the remaining balance from the 1920 school year, and the 2% threshold is just over $1.9 million, which we anticipate being available for us to utilize for a safe reopening of school. When we met back on August 13th, I believe it was, I shared with you that we had participated in a number of surveys through OPM and then in the State Department of Ed, and we were anticipating additional grant dollars. We actually were expecting that announcement the day after the board meeting. We didn't receive that announcement until August 21st, and at that time, I sent you all an email telling you that we were approved for $401,000. Fast forward another week, we got a letter from Kathy Dempsey, the CFO at the State Department of Education, and learned that there was an error in the transportation calculations throughout the state of Connecticut, and they reran the numbers, and our grant amount actually changed to the $546,076 you see here listed. What I want to walk you through, though, is of that $546,000, it is specifically going to be paid out on a reimbursement basis. It's not an outright grant that we can then determine how to spend the dollars. So what I did is I prepared a little breakdown of how they funded our survey results, and you will see that they were allocating just over $16,000 for us for PPE. Personnel related to transportation, they were willing to fund $108,000 of our request. And non-personnel transportation, they were funding $421,000. The non-transportation funds were, when we submitted the survey results, we were looking at the midday bus runs at Southington High School for close to, just over $500,000. Therefore, we are not running the midday bus run. So as of right now, we are in fact not necessarily eligible for that $421,000 that they were going to give us as a reimbursement basis. We were pushed, well, we're still pushing for better clarification on that because our thought process is, we are running all of our bus runs, even though we're doing the hybrid model at Southington High School, we're running all of the buses to have the appropriate social distancing to occur, and we felt that receiving this refund towards our overall transportation cost would allow us to reallocate dollars within our budget to help pay for the personnel that we needed. Because as you know, none of our personnel requests were funded because our free and reduced lunch population here in Southington falls under the 40% threshold. So the $108,000 that they did approve for transportation-related expenses for personnel would be able to assist us with the monitors that we discussed, and also the additional time for parent educators to help with the arrival and dismissal of students. That would all be built around transportation. So I was troubled by that $16,617 for PPE because many people and my colleagues throughout the state were telling us that PPE was the most important thing that was going to be funded, and many districts were funded in full. So in conversations, I realized that we were funded at the minimum of $2.60 per student. So I called the state, had some conversations, again, with Kathy Dempsey, and just prior to the meeting, well, she acknowledged in our conversation that our PPE request was not considered. I don't know how, again, it sounds like some kind of an error in the formula that they're looking at. And in fact, she just emailed me prior to the start of the meeting to say that OPM has agreed that our PPE will be funded, and she'll send a more formal letter tomorrow. So that was $310,000. And as of right now, of the 310, they were only funding that $16,000. So that's great news for us, so that's not reflected in anything you see here. I just had a footnote down at the bottom of the page that we were anticipating, you know, we're anticipating additional dollars. So as of right now, I have that $2.5 million so-called available. However, based on my explanation, I hope you realize that $421,000 for transportation potentially may go away unless they allow us to reallocate that to something else on our list of needs. And we anticipate that that $16,000 will be replaced by hopefully the full $310,000. So that's where we are on the revenue side. If you flip the page, what we did is we, we left the estimates that we shared with you from our initial survey results that we have provided to the state from August 5th, and then we added a new column with updated estimate amounts of where we are through today. So you will see, and I'm sure you'll hear more about this in regards to the reopening plan as we get to the next agenda item, but we are looking to fund 25 additional teachers, and an MOU was agreed to with the SEA at a rate of pay. So you will see that our estimated cost has been reduced significantly because of fewer teachers and a different rate. So we're looking at about $774,000 in regards to certified staff. The custodian number, we are still working on hiring, but that too, due to the successful negotiations with both the custodians and the nurses on an MOU, agreeing that they will waive the recognition clause for those union members if in fact they work over the 20 hours per week. They will not be members of the bargaining unit, they will not be eligible for benefits, and it's a one-year agreement only for the current school year. So once we are able to run new numbers with a different rate of pay through that process, you will see that the cost has been reduced for both the custodian and the nurse needs. We have not been successful in filling all of those requests at this point in time, but I could assure you that we will still make sure that we have our existing staff. We'll pick up the slack in regards to the custodial time needed. And we are looking to contract with the vendor at the two middle schools to utilize one of their part-time people, since we haven't been able to fill the vacancies ourselves. In regards to nurses, we did post for both nurses and CNAs. As of 4:30 today, I followed up, we had just gotten our second application in regards to a CNA. So they're still in the process of interviewing and looking for additional coverage there. The food service staff is really an estimate at this point in time. We're still waiting to see what the participation numbers look like. I haven't changed that number. We are still in a position where we have four or five vacancies from our existing staff. So I'm not, I'm fairly confident we're not going to be looking at spending this type of money unless something changes in regards to the overall eligibility of students through the child nutrition. The USDA had released some new information early in the week, and we have yet to get clarification on eligibility for meals at this point in time. And the last item, the last two items I spoke about in regards to the revenue would be the potential use of bus monitors and the parent educators additional time. So those two items, that $31,000 and the $130,000, are the dollars that there's grant money, there's the $108,000 worth of grant money that could be applied to those potential costs. I factored in a small benefit charge for Medicare, and then we moved to purchase services. So you will see what, to date, we have spent or encumbered for additional software needs for technology. You'll see we no longer have that midday transportation run in our calculations, some dollars for professional development training. So right now, in the purchase services, we're looking at about $128,000. And then you will see supplies and some furniture expenses that we believe should be eligible for that new PPE funding that should be coming to the state. So that $115,000, we would make an argument that that should be refunded through those new grant funds. So the total at this point in time is just over $1.6 million in total cost. And then I'll just bring you back again to that front page, where we're looking at the availability of about $2.5 million. So I feel like we are in a really good place. We know that there's still unknowns, and we know that there will still be some dollars that will need to be spent on things that we might not have even thought about until we open the doors next week. But on the flip side of that, we also know that there are some savings with the reduced school year and transportation and things like that. We'll also be able to, at some point in time, be looking to make some operating budget transfers. So at this point, I'd be happy to open it up to any questions you may have.
Does anyone have any questions, comments? Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I think I know the answer, but these are all for a whole year, the estimates, right?
Correct. Yes. So staffing would be for the full year.
So if something different happens, say, in six months, who knows?
Correct. I mean, the teacher line, I would say, is, you know, we plan to keep those staff to assist in teaching our students. But we made it clear in a lot of those new postings that we have for custodial and nursing positions that those are only needed if the school is in fact in session.
Okay, so if something changes, then there's no process of...
Correct.
...laying, well, unemployment or whatever?
They would be eligible for unemployment if they were to be laid off. But unemployment goes back to their previous four quarters of earnings. So our earnings from the Southington Public Schools would be minimal at that point if in fact we were to, you know, close early, you know, prior to January, for example.
Thank you.
Any other board members with questions? Dave?
Just a quick comment. Great job.
Thank you.
Yeah, very great.
It's a group effort, trust me. There's a lot of moving pieces in this, and everybody, you know, we're shaking the trees around the office all the time, making sure we're trying to capture everything that's involved with this.
So we hope that there will be no changes, any further changes.
I can assure you there will be changes. This is an estimate as of today.
Sure.
As of today. And like I said, as we move along, we, you know, we try to think of all of the potential needs in the district.
I'm sure, Sharon.
We know we're going to need more hand sanitizer, more wipes, those things. You know, right now, we bought everything we knew we needed to get going. And then we will obviously be revisiting these and making additional purchases as necessary. I know the board was kind enough at the last meeting to give us the approval to spend up to that $1.9 million. And right now, we're, you know, we're under that, plus we have the additional grant funding.
Joe, you had your hand up?
Yes, I just wanted a little bit of clarification. So as far as, I understood the explanation of the relief funds. But, so just to reiterate, there's a potential chance that we may not be eligible for the 420, but that may get, some of it could transfer into the PPE request of the 310.
Yes, so...
Essentially, that's still a relatively moving target, that we're still...
It is. I'll know more tomorrow, once I get confirmation from that. And then my understanding is what they're going to do is open up some type of an actual grant application. But they're not sending, what traditionally happens in a grant is, they tell us what our allocation is, we then send in a budget of what we anticipate spending, and then we just start drawing down that money as we spend it.
Where they want actual proof of...
Now, they're going to want actual proof of reimbursements for these expenditures, and we are trying to get better clarification if we can make transfers within our allocation for the transportation dollars. But if we didn't have those, we'd be looking at the 108, plus hopefully the full funding of 310 to get us at about $418,000.
Okay. And then my, one other follow-up question. So I guess to build off of Bob's statement as far as like with the school year potentially changing and everything else. So, and I guess we'll go into it more once we start to review the plan, but as we reopen, as we get our, I guess, our groove on, so to speak, right? Will we still need all of these workers and things like that? Do we have certain things that we could potentially hit? Where it's like, okay, well, you know, we really don't... For example, I know a couple of families that are specifically holding their kids home to do the virtual learning, and they sort of want to fill it out for a month and see how things are going, and then potentially get them registered for in-person. So does that change the model at any point?
Of course, it'll change. Mr. Cannell, did you want to answer that?
Yes, please. We have approximately 430-plus students at the elementary level who are going to be engaging in remote learning. And the way we structured that was based, with the exception of kindergarten, because we broke the grips into smaller blocks of time. We structured that based on the number of people we needed, based on the board recommended class sizes. That's where that number of teachers came from. The idea is for those individuals to stay with those students throughout the course of the year. I obviously do not have a crystal ball, but I do not believe that we will have 430 students re-engaged into our classrooms. We did have a lot of families who were absolutely adamant about having their children, having their children out. So I think the other piece is the custodial, the nursing. We have to have all of those in because we clearly have to do the cleaning. We have to, we have to have the ability to supervise all the expanded nursing responsibilities that we have in the school. So when it comes to that, I don't, I don't see that that's going to change for us over time. Now, if everything goes back to the way it was, I mean, heaven forbid, on March 13th, and classes are canceled across the board, we do have the ability to look at some of the folks that we brought on because they're, we brought them on in essentially an interim capacity, is that the correct term? This is the know?
Yes.
An interim capacity. So if we're not doing extra cleaning in the buildings, we're not going to need extra custodial services. Because it's so difficult to predict, what we, what we can't do is we can't be in a position where we say, oh, we're going to be out for, you know, six months, and then we take all of these people offline, and then all of a sudden, we're back in school again, because we're going to have to do all the same things. We're going to have to plan for all the same things. Whenever it is, whenever we come back into school, that we do right now. Again, you know, the cleaning, the nursing services. We're going to have to figure out a way to make sure that we retain those services, because once the people go, it's been hard enough to hire them in right now. So it's going to be a little tricky, and we're going to have to play that along the way. I'm not seeing where we're going to have a significant reduction in the, on the personnel side, quite frankly.
I just wanted to share, but I just got an email, or a text saying that the live streaming is not working and the voice is going in and out. So just to make you aware of that, I wanted to.
I told Sandy, yeah.
Any other board members? Mr. O'Shaughnessy?
Even if we don't get the transportation money, we're still at two point four, two point three eight, two point four million, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
That's a heck of a lot better when we left.
Oh, yeah, sure is.
Yes, absolutely.
I think that says an awful lot of, like David said, that Mr. Darnoski said, the hard work that went in, this couldn't have been easy. But it's, and it goes back to this thought, we're going to run into bumps, things are going to change.
Don't know. Stuff we don't know.
Changes, but again, it goes back to saying, don't throw stones, let's work together to get to something, this is a.
Sharon, you said that our voices are in and out, so people cannot hear everything that we're saying.
Correct.
That you just said, which is a shame, because I think the community, as I said in the beginning, statement that I made, I think our community should be extremely proud of the work that everyone associated with our school system has done. And this, I'm sure all of us are very pleased with this. I'm very proud of our school system, I am proud of the people that work for our school system. And, you know, I sincerely hope next week, Tuesday is our first day, is that correct? That we can all have a smile on our face at the end of that day, that everything has gone well, because there are too many unknowns, none of us know the answer to so many things. But we have done certainly a wonderful, wonderful job. And let us get the students back to their schools, back to seeing their teachers, the teachers seeing their students, and let us concentrate on the emotional as well as the academic well-being of everyone involved. Thank you for this report.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much, very thorough and very easy to understand. Any other comments? Mr. Canellan, no, Mr. Brown, I'm sorry.
I just have one more comment. It sounds like the numbers, we have some quote "extra money", but I just want to warn people who might be listening, because we don't know what's going to happen.
No, we don't.
That we should have a little buffer there, because who knows three months from now? So it's not like we just have this slush fund that you always.
No, we don't.
We don't really.
No, and I think we'd all argue that really, we were hoping that obviously the one point nine million dollars within that two percent fund would, had this not been the situation, we would be able to fund a number of projects and capital items that have been a pent-up demand. So there's definitely not extra money, this money would have been well-spent in other areas.
I want to make it sound that way.
But we are fortunate that we have the money available to help us with a safe reopening plan.
I'm sorry, Dave?
We have a meeting scheduled for next Thursday, a regular board meeting.
Right.
Will there be an agenda item, I know it's not out yet, but will there be an agenda item to kind of highlight some of the things for the school opening as well as any changes that may?
I'm certain there will be, Dave, we haven't even done the agenda yet, but I'm certain that that will be on the agenda. That's next Thursday, right?
Correct.
Next Thursday.
The tenth, correct.
Any other board members? I, yes, Mr. Canellan, did you want to speak?
I did, if you didn't mind, just parenthetically, that was an excellent, it's an excellent job trying to manage all this.
Excellent.
The, you know, there's been a lot in the media published about the money coming from the state, et cetera, et cetera. I think their hearts are in the right place. The way this was handled was not the way we would handle it. There was, there was a request to, via a survey, to estimate costs. That was literally back, I think it was due, what, July seventeenth? So we had to hand in our estimates literally two weeks after we received the guidelines from the state that we worked all summer on. No one that I've spoken to, not one superintendent, is happy about that. No one knew that that was going to be a funding stream mechanism. And you can see by the amount that we asked for in personnel, that was our, that was our key area, and of course, we didn't get it. So there are a lot of inequities involved in that whole process. We may see some changes, I don't know if we will. The Superintendent's Association has essentially asked the Commissioner and the Governor to have a little moratorium on distributing this money until maybe folks can sit back and take a little better look at it. Because quite honestly, the way it was done just doesn't make any sense to any of us. And we've been doing this for a lot of years, it just doesn't make any sense. So we're still going to work on that, I'm not holding out hope that we're going to get more money, but we're not going to stop trying either. And, you know, Mrs. Donello's persistence was not only admirable, but it did result in that, you know, that piece. So we need to, we need to continue to pursue that, and we are doing that through our respective professional organizations. And we're doing it in a respectful way, I don't want to say we're not thankful, we are thankful for the dollars, but we really, really, really could use some additional funding, especially on the personnel side. And for this community, we did what we were asked to do. We've got students K eight going back full-time, five days a week. We had to do the hybrid model at the high school, and I think we're doing a pretty darn good job of it so far. So, well, that story remains to be finished. Maybe we'll have better news, you know, down the road, we'll see how that works.
So we look forward to next Thursday to having a, on our agenda, a report. I'm certain of how the first three days would it be? They start Tuesday, Wednesday, so we'll have three days of school. I'm certain we will have some great stories, because I know how hard everyone in this system has worked, and I am so very proud of everything that I have seen and heard. And I'm just looking forward to next Thursday's meeting. Sharon, thank you and your staff for all that you've done, we really appreciate it. And Mr. Medancy, I understand that professional development has gone very well, and that's very, very important. You know, the teachers have to learn this new canvas. Can you imagine trying to teach it to me, Mr. Medancy, it would have been really a wonderful experience? Are you laughing, Mr. Brown?
I just.
Okay.
Yes, he is, Mrs. Carmody, yes, he is.
I thought he was laughing at me, but that's okay. But I have heard wonderful things about the professional development. You know, the teachers, they're nervous also, okay? And so we just, just remember, we're all in this together. And I, I'm just thrilled, and I'm sure everything's going to go well Tuesday, so let's keep our fingers crossed.
And that was a nice segue into the next part of the report, because the first part of the reopening is really about professional development, and Mr. Medancy was going to give us a brief update.
So we do have an agenda item tonight, I understood the last board meeting, we were looking for an update, you know? And so we have, I have information to, you know, just share on some of the stuff. Even relative to the professional development, I'd be remiss if I didn't say the teachers and the administrators that are on the Professional Development Evaluation Committee really deserve all the credit. I will be very honest with you, I was in a space where I wasn't able to pull things together normally where I would be able to, for personal reasons, as you guys all know. And they all stepped up and worked together, different departments, teachers, everybody, and we had, the good news is we had a lot of this established to the spring, what it was going to look like. But we got four additional days kind of fairly quickly out of nowhere, when we revised the calendar last meeting. But that was a blessing, that was not a curse. It's just, okay, let's make this meaningful for folks, you know, that's that, you know, that gift of time and taking advantage of that. So they deserve the credit, the coordinators, the building administrators at every level that are the subcommittee chairs and the teachers that serve on that committee, they volunteer. So a lot of those people put a lot of extra work in, behind the scenes, coordinating things, spaces, times, materials, resources, communicating things out. So I want to start with that. I know we sent out last week, and you hopefully have received the four addendums that we added to the one point, the two-point-oh plan relative to special education, food services, healthcare monitor, cleaning, disinfecting. So that's, those addendums come from us when we get the guidance that we need from the State Department of Education and the State Department of Public Health. So we get that information continuously. So I know sometimes it may feel like to our families, they're getting information in dribs and drabs. And it should, because that's how they are, we're forced to deliver that information, because we do have to rely on it, Tim and I have said this all along, we're not the medical experts. So we rely on the guidance and expertise of the medical experts, you know, in order to make informed decisions for our staff and our students. In addition to those addendums, we've been, Tim and I both have been frequently attending the Department of Public Health, State Department of Public Health meetings and conversations. Where to, I mean, the details are just unimaginable, I mean, even about placades and how to use it, you know? UV rays, air dilution, formates, viral loads, like all the things we're considering about surface transmission and social distancing. If you said to me last year, Steve, we'd like you to open a virtual school in a week, staff it, get a curriculum, get a learning platform, get devices out, create schedules, communicate with families, and make them all feel welcome and included, I would tell you I'd need more than a week, but we have a week. So we've been interviewing into the evening every night. I finished last night interviews at eight o'clock, we're trying to onboard staff, we're trying to honor all, not trying to, we are honoring all of the statutes and laws that come with that for onboarding employees that are working with children. All of the, that's not a quick turnaround, as you know, but everything between references, fingerprinting, background checks, direct testing, everything that goes with that. Assigning staff to remote classes, both from with existing staff and new staff. The new staff we will be training really right up through the opening. In addition to that, our orientation plan really, you know, centers for the remote learners around getting the devices deployed, you know, a lot of, a little bit of time on the emotional piece for kids. The teacher meet and greet in person for the remote learners, the materials and supplies picked up, the consumables, manipulators, what have you, a virtual open house. We've designated Kelly Nichols as the administrator overseeing the remote school. We're a remote school of four hundred and thirty students, so as you can imagine, that's more than some of our current staffed in-person schools. So thankfully, we have Kelly stepping up and willing and able to do that. Because families who are not connected to their homeschool, if that teacher, who is their child's teacher, isn't someone that that principal is supervising, how do they troubleshoot? You know, I'll call it a service issue, like we don't think, it's this teacher's meeting my child's needs, who do I go to? You know, so Kelly's the point person, she'll be overseeing all the instruction and the coordination and communication with that faculty, and then the point person for families to connect with as well. In addition to that, a lot of our work this week was, is on PD and it's on software. You know, these are things normally we wouldn't put this much software out in front of folks in a short amount of time. But we have to use this time, because what we learned in the spring was this, you know, changes in plans can be sudden. And you can't use the time once things are changed already to try and catch people up to speed. You've got to use the time you have now to bring people, to get people in what I call a ready state. In addition, our teachers have done a tremendous job with both their physical and their virtual classrooms. So we've provided a lot of training in the spring. Rebecca Savakal and a team of teachers, what we call the tech experts, all, these people all again said, what do you need, we'll help. And they went outside of their school day, evenings, weekends, throughout the summer, working with other teachers to provide that technical support. In our, in our calls with other superintendents, I have to say, they are, they, I don't often brag, because I think we're lean in many areas and we're behind always because of that. But in this area, we're far ahead in terms of our staff preparedness with technology, because of the training we were able to do in the spring during the contractual time that we mandated for them to attend. And then Rebecca's foresight to record everything and capture it so that we don't have to duplicate this if there's staff turnaround and people coming onboard quickly, we've got things that have already been curated and are ready to be shared. We have training materials and supplies that we're working on right now for families as well, so they can navigate these learning management systems, both Canvas and Google Classroom that are going to be pushed out shortly. I've been meeting with the Early Childhood Collaborative frequently. Her entire page has all of the childcare openings set up. I'm going to be sending something out to our staff around between two and one childcare in the YMCA, all the options for them around to their own children should things, status change, and they need to make arrangements. In addition to that, my big conversations yesterday with existing staff, I kind of, like you would with any good teacher, you just, you know, hit them in the heart. That's where you get them, not the head, you go to the heart with teachers. And I said, some of these kids didn't choose remote learning, their parents chose it for them. And those are reasons that parents have every right to choose and their own reasons. And I respect and appreciate every decision a parent makes. But knowing that, as professionals, that we owe it to them to make this a meaningful experience, right? And then in addition to that, these parents in many ways, four hundred and thirty students out of our classrooms are what's really quite honestly allowing us to return full in person, because if they all came back, we couldn't socially distance with the amount of rooms and the size of the rooms that we have. We'd be going hybrid. So not only is it, do we need to make it meaningful, but we need to make it quality so that they're comfortable within the setting that their child is in, because we're delivering, right? And that's going to be a work in progress. It's not going to be wonderful, because you're not going to open a virtual school in a week and have no bumps in the road like this. We'll be working, you know, building the plane as we fly it is literally an appropriate analogy in this situation. And then the last piece, lessons learned from the spring. And that parent, Mrs. Clark, that you spoke about, I understand her concerns about live instruction and screen time. And we will develop schedules that are developmentally appropriate, that have some balance of screen time and screen breaks. We will make sure that it's not just digital, that there's hands-on learning as well. And we will make sure we chunk it, both the chunks of time and the chunks of breaks. Because parents who might be able to work from home on a Zoom meeting can't have their kid logging on and off every twenty minutes for the next lesson and transitions and routines. I often joke with our teachers, it's hard to get twenty kids ready for a reading lesson when they're all right in your room right in front of you. Now, when they're in twenty different homes, how do you get them all ready to go? So we'll develop schedules that are cognizant of the amount of times parents are making sure Aaron's not outside on his scooter, that he's behind his screen, you know, during a screen break, so that we're ready to start instruction. But then in addition to that, the lesson learned from the parents in the spring, and this is, I really would not fault anybody for this, this was the circumstance that everybody was thrust into, and you're all very aware of this. We didn't, we weren't a one-to-one, so we had many families sharing. So live instruction's difficult, because who gets to go in the household when they're sharing one device to that live class if there's a designated time? In addition to that, the teachers hadn't had the training, especially at the elementary level, because normally you wouldn't go digital with kids that young. And so there was a learning curve, so a lot of the responsibility was thrust upon parents, where a teacher would push out a lesson, but then that child has a question. And right then and there, the question, anybody who knows teaching and learning, that's when the question's most important. And if you have to wait to ask your question or get your answer, that question loses its relevance and its meaning relative to the flow of that lesson, and the meaning of that lesson. So when a teacher might have had office hours and been available for parents the next day, is that when a child or parent is going to ask a question about yesterday's English class lesson, like many lessons, it just doesn't make sense. So we need our teachers to be live and available, so that if they have a question in real time, they can ask it in real time and get an answer in real time. And we heard far more parents say they needed more live instruction, that they didn't feel qualified to answer the questions that their kids were asking, because they're not the certified experts. And they're right. I think our teachers appreciate that we are able to provide devices to students, that they've got the training, we've got the software in place, and we will be clear with our families on the expectations for remote learning. You need to be present, cameras need to be on, you know, there's expected behavior, learner expectations, I'll call it, you know? That this matters, every day that you're going to school, even if it's remotely, in our remote school, it matters. We will have a virtual orientation for our families, so we can welcome them, explain the structure of the day, and make these kids, the adults I spoke to last night, that are parts of our current staff that accepted remote assignments, are all in. Because I told them, you have to feel lucky that you're going to be the person that gets to make a difference in this child's life this year, that's what we're going.
Exactly.
And so they all said, what do you need, we'll help with anything, they all had a lot of good ideas. So we will have a remote faculty meeting with this remote school, and we will talk about all the ways we can make these students feel included and welcome. We're also making sure when we develop those class lists, if there are fourteen kids from Thalberg that have opted out of their grade, they're all going to be in that remote classroom. And if there's a third-grade teacher from Thalberg that has accepted a remote assignment, they'll be with that teacher. So we're making every effort we can right now to keep kids from their homeschools together, and wherever we can, assign teachers from those schools to the cohorts where those kids are placed. It's not a perfect fit, because we don't have twenty teachers that have accepted remote assignments from our existing, but we have been able to successfully put kids in cohorts that the kids that are opting out from their grade level in their school are going to be with them in their remote class. So we're trying to maintain that sense of community for them, and I'm sure we'll get more creative as we go. But this is just a lot in a short amount of time.
Right.
And I have to tell you, a lot of families have been frustrated, because it does seem like everything's happening at the eleventh hour. But in the, for all of that, our families have been wonderful. Most have said, we appreciate everything you're doing, we understand what you're going through, we don't envy your position, and thank you. Here are our questions, our concerns, but the people have been very reasonable, extremely patient, even if their patience is wearing thin, they've been great to work with, and, you know, we're just doing everything we can, our administrative team and our central office team. And, uh, you know, we're just doing everything we can, our administrative team and our central office team to get everything ready. So next Thursday, I don't know if I'll have a lot of new information beyond that. I, Monday we're off. If I, but in three days, if a lot changes, I, I tell our administrative team and our teachers, because they ask questions often, what I tell you today might very well change tomorrow. Um, that's why we don't record a lot of our sessions, our meetings, because if somebody watches it three days later, the answer that, that was archived or preserved there could very well have changed. And people, that's where miscommunication occurs. So we try to document things instead in real time and, and so that people can read it as it's updated and have the most up-to-date information.
Thank you. I, I, I was really glad to hear you, um, mention about the amount of screen time. Um, I know that's a concern for many parents. They've been talking about some of the adverse effects that that can have on students. So that's great that you're looking into all that. Thank you so much. Any, any comments, questions from board members? Dave?
Just a simple question. I don't need an answer right now. Um, you didn't mention anything about the grading. And I know when we, uh, finished last, uh...
I can answer that right now, though. That's an easy one. All, all the recommendation we've gotten in the guidance up to this point around grading is to, to go back to a traditional grading system that we've always used. You know, that le- that expectation, that level of accountability. Um, because the, now the, the mindset behind the spring was if kids didn't have access to devices or the in-home support, then what, right? But our kids now are either in school or with adults because the expectation is that you're able to help them if you're opting for remote. And, and also we're providing them with, with what I would call equity in terms of access, both network and device. So we feel comfortable that we can grade. How we grade or assess remotely is a different conversation that I'm working on with administrators right now. It's not so much things that you'd ever be able to look up online.
Really.
Or ask Google.
Hiring about.
It's about the authentic piece. It's about demonstration and application of knowledge and not rote recall.
Okay.
Thank you. Bob?
Yeah, I just thought of a question. Um, I know we've surveyed parents and gotten a really good response. Are there still parents and their kids who we haven't heard from, we don't know what they're doing?
No, we had, uh, we had a list of folks who we hadn't heard from. And so all of the schools, it was divide and conquer, reached out to the families from their specific schools who hadn't responded. One of the challenges that we're up against right now is families are vacillating, understandably so. But the minute we finalize a class list, somebody calls and says, I want out, or somebody calls and says, I want in. And the challenge with I want in is we've just literally made sure we measured the desks to make sure we have the appropriate distancing and the amount of space in that room. And now you're adding so, uh, one person and you reconfigure the space in that room. So we will get to a point in the very near future that if people are changing, there's gonna have to be a transition period, a buffer, if you will, built into that, you know, that switch. Because the health and safety protocols for the in-person classes, we still have to maintain. We can't just drop people in the next morning. It's never that way in a normal school year. You can have the custodian in the morning bring a desk down to the classroom and the kid gets welcomed by the school counselor or social worker. And the, the teacher assigns a best friend to that kid and all, before you know it, the kid's the most popular kid in the class and they've got a desk in the room and all their supplies and materials are waiting. It's just not gonna be that way here, so.
So, so part of my question was, are there still people that we haven't heard from?
No.
So we, basically someone has contacted everyone? Okay, good.
Uh, Mr. Fallow?
So I know at our last board meeting, you were saying how like, um, ordering the devices were a challenge because there was such a huge backlog with like almost every district in the country ordering new devices. So, um, do we have a device for every student in the district at this point?
We, we don't have a device, but as a community, we have devices. And so what we followed up with families, there were sixty-five percent of families on the survey that said that they, we had them fill it out by student, not by family, that I have a device for this student that they will not have to share. Right? And so we had that, so we knew that thirty-five percent, we knew who those families were because they responded with their names. So we started with the thirty-five percent who just don't have a device. In addition to that sixty-five percent though, some, if we're in a hybrid model like the high school, they may have a device, but what if it's a desktop? You can't carry that to school, to, to, into the school building. We're talking mobile devices. So we're now following up with those who said yes, but it may not be a family-owned device that can be brought to school and we're gonna backfill with that as well. Um, we're feeling pretty good about between, the combination of, in, some districts actually do this as their regular planned deployment, a hybrid model where it is a combination of BYOD and district provide devices so that you have that. But at the end of the day, the common device for all helps us in so many ways because of the software and the platforms and the web filtering and management and all of this, the safety net, the network pieces that we need. Cause they're gonna be coming with their own personal devices. We have software to help ameliorate problems where we can, but it's not foolproof. And so eventually, when we get all our devices all on our network with all of our software installed, it's a much more seamless integration. Thank you.
And the other, Mr. O'Shaughnessy?
Just a quick, going back to what you just said, it, it, just being at two different schools this past week. At, at Kennedy, the, um, counselor had at her desk floor full of files because this is how quickly this has changed. These are all new people that were opting back in. And as you're walking around the building, you see them rearranging the rooms so they'd have room for them. And over at O'Shaughnessy, they were actually interviewing for a new teacher that was gonna start the first day of school. That's as soon as they'd be able to get that teacher onboard because they had to break up the fourth grade because people are coming back in. So this is gonna be an ever-changing target. And I think.
Right.
That flexibility of these rooms, you're right, it's not just, hey, I need a desk. No, no, you're gonna have to rearrange the entire, in some cases, the grade.
The cohort.
Yeah, exactly, the full thing. And maybe hire a new teacher.
That wa- that was part of the change. We had five schools, but we had to add a section to.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, largely to accommodate space in, in classrooms. O'Shaughnessy was one of them, uh, obviously.
And that's, that's what, what, today, what's it, Thursday, Tuesday, one, two, three, four? Four days before school starts, right?
Yeah. So it is, it is changing daily, you know, to a certain extent. And we're just gonna have to remain flexible. And, and our folks have been really great about it, honestly. They've dug in and done whatever, whatever we've needed them to do. In order to make sure that we're gonna, you know, have a safe environment for, for our students. So, um, Mrs. Donello wanted to do a PSA, if that's okay. She got that from Mr. Pepe, by the way.
Yes, I am. I'm stealing Mr. Pepe's PSA, um, concept. But in, in the event that we do have an audience this evening, I just wanted to remind parents that, um, to fill out the applications, if they're el- to see if they're eligible for free or reduced meals, um, in town. I also wanted to remind them that we are going cashless as a district. So they all received an email on Monday encouraging them to put money on their child's My Payment Plus account. Or they can bring in a check that the cashier can ring in to put onto their account if that's needed. Um, and last but not least, we will have locations set up at both Kennedy and Apollo Middle Schools from nine to ten AM every morning for the ability for students, families that have remote students. Or our hybrid high school students who may not be in school will have the ability to pick up meals for breakfast and lunch.
Wonderful.
But this is not like it was in the spring where the meals were free. The meals will only be free for those that are eligible for free meals. And so we'll be taking the, um, parent, the student names so that we can actually ring them through, um, our system. So I just wanted to remind parents about the cashless and the opportunity to get meals for both breakfast and lunch. And just like we did in the spring, depending on participation, we may change times, change locations as adjusted, um, based on the participation.
Thank you, Sherry.
You're welcome.
Uh, yes, Joe?
Uh, so I just had a quick question as far as like the physical setup of buildings and things like that. So are we operating from CDC guidelines for, for that? Or is it the, like, local Connecticut DPH recommendations?
Oh, can I answer? We've, we're using a combination of the CDC guidelines and the American Academy of Pediatrics.
Okay. And then, um, now, just out of curiosity, certainly during the summer was a perfect example of how quickly things change. I, I know for like outdoor gatherings, you know, it was cohorts and it was fifteen feet, then it was twelve feet, then it was six feet. And then, you know, everything in between. So how do we sort of mitigate that? Uh, you know, has there been any changes since we've started working on this plan? Because I, I know we've been working on this for months and, um, you know.
You're talking about.
Something's changed.
You're talking about.
How do we accommodate that?
I'm sorry, you're talking about students being outside in groups?
No, no, ju- just like in general, like, so, like desks, I assume they're, what, three feet apart or are they six feet apart?
We're, we start with the, the supposition that we wanna try to be six feet apart.
Yep.
But we can't always be six feet apart.
Right. And three feet's acceptable as long as.
Three feet's the minimum and then.
Three feet's the minimum for without face coverings, three feet's with face coverings. Now, um, you know, again, like, what, how, how does that get mitigated based on, um, like, changes in models or?
Yeah.
Again, I, I'm, I'm hopeful that, you know, again, a vaccine's gonna come out, people who wanna get it are gonna get it and everything else. I, I'm thinking that we're gonna be moving past this in six months.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, that's as a healthcare worker that's been in the front lines of this and everything else. Um, you know, so I, I'm, I'm hopeful that if we stay positive about this, if we, if we do clear, concise mitigation and, you know, deal with things as they come up. Yeah, are, are people gonna have an infection? Probably. Um, you know, but, but again, like, how do we, like, deal with all those and all the moving puzzles? CDC, not CDC, but, um, CIAC and DPH just recently had their little conundrum of DPH said, no, you can't do a high-risk sport. And CIAC, oh, yeah, we can. And a- again, like, that, that's the expert telling another organization, you know, like, okay, this is what we're recommending.
Sure.
But in essence, they're recommendations.
Yeah.
So, you know, again, it's your choice.
DPH has been pr- consistent over time. And each time they have modified recommendations, they've been pretty clear about what those modifications have been. I believe I sent out to a board member the guidance that they just sent out on face covering and mask wearing.
Right.
And they've continued to emphasize that as recently as this past Tuesday morning. Uh, we have a Tuesday morning call with the DPH, superintendent groups, uh, are involved in that. Our local health director's involved in that. We have Kathy O'Hare, our nursing supervisor's involved in that. Many districts have that at the same time. And they're continuing to impress upon folks the need to, to use the suite of mitigation strategies. It's not any one strategy, but the suite of mitigation strategies. And, uh, a- again, just this past Tuesday, the emphasis was clearly on the importance of mask wearing because that's the universal control. And, and that, they say, out of all the mitigation strategies is the most important in schools to use. Uh, and again, it's a whole suite of mitigation strategies. It's hand hygiene, it's distancing, it, uh, it's all of those things. It's ventilation and it's cleaning and disinfecting. But nonetheless, they have been very, very consistent over time with regard to that. And they've made some, some subtle adjustments to that, but we're in tune with them. We, uh, those meetings are gonna continue for the foreseeable future. In addition to meeting with DPH, we have a call from our, our health district, which is Southington, Plainville and Middlefield. Uh, and we have town managers on that, we have superintendents on that, we have the health directors. So we've, uh, we've pretty much stayed in tune with all of those recommendations. And as the subtle changes have come down, we've passed those on to our administrative leadership team and we've, we've implemented changes where we've, you know, where we've needed to.
Any other, Joe, are you, no, no, Dave, I'm sorry. Joe, are you done? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, you're, you're finished? Uh, Dave?
Yeah, I have a, just a procedural question. Uh, there's roughly one point four million dollars here that we're looking to spend for one point six million. Uh, now, none of these items are in the original budget. Do we need a motion to go ahead and authorize the expenditures that are listed here?
My understanding was at the last Board of Education meeting that the board gave the administration the flexibility to spend, um, on items necessary for a safe reopening up to the one point nine million dollars. So I think at this point, we're in the good.
Right, I'm just asking, that was just a general number, uh, now we're, now we've got specific numbers. I'm just, just.
Yeah.
Making sure that we don't get stepped on by, uh, the procedures.
No, I think we're, I, I think we're in a good position because there, there also were some, um, uh, estimates, not the, not the estimates that you have in front of you today, but the idea that we had, we knew that we were gonna have some additional costs for transportation we'd share, but we had, we had submitted to the state. So I, I think we are in good shape with regard to that, Mr. Donowski.
Right, does that also stand for the MOU that was, uh?
Yep, the MOU, the MOU memorandum of, uh, agreement or memorandum of understanding, uh, is really just clarification on, uh, on practices. And, uh, the piece with regard to the, the, the teaching, if you will, had to do with the rate for, uh, so, long-term substitute teachers. And, uh, the, I have to say that working with the SEA was, was a good experience. I know many districts have not had a good experience.
Exactly.
But we've worked very collaboratively together and it, they were very much in favor of, of making that adjustment. It's, you know, it's a one-year adjustment only, but they were very much in favor of making that and knew that that was, uh, that was gonna be a key point in being able to make a modification to our plan to do the remote learning, uh, remote learning school. Is that it?
Yeah. Yeah. Looking for a mascot.
Yeah. There we go.
Any other, um, comments, questions? Um, Mr. Canel and I, I believe that concludes all that we were gonna discuss.
That's all we have for this evening.
We, do we need a motion to end this meeting?
Move to adjourn?
Huh? Did you say, yes?
Just for everybody.
Dave? Okay, we're all good.
Everybody.
Everybody, everybody, everybody.